Anybody here from Dave? I thought I saw a message from Dave, actually. There he is, right there. He's gonna be a little late tonight, so we're in good shape to get started. Has anybody heard from, uh, member Greider? Is Greider coming online? Hector, have you heard from Greider? All right, let's go ahead and call this meeting. I won't call it to order until you're ready, Hector.
Microphones, please. Green means go.
Okay. Mary, can, sir, can we talk to Public Works about turning the heat up in the entire building just a little bit? Not tonight, but just in, like, I don't think it would react in time anyway, but just in general, it's kind of cold in this building. Are you okay?
I am, but I'd rather not.
Did you want some of the message, Greider?
I just did.
Oh, okay.
Check the fusion.
I wonder if she was thinking 5:30. I know Dave probably couldn't get here in time from work.
I'm coming in person. Sorry, running a little late from work. She'll be here in about three minutes. Okay, looks like we have Dave and the attendees. Okay, it's 5:08. We will call this study session of November 6th to order roll call page.
Councillor Coley.
Here.
Councillor Pranamrav.
Here.
Councillor Greider, he's not present. Councillor Pestezo, he's not present. Councillor Byers.
Here.
Councillor Para Miller.
Here.
And Mayor Eris Flood.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Hector. For the record, I just got a message from Councillor Greider, who said she'll be here in about five minutes, so we'll add her to the roster when she gets here. All right, so we're on to the discussion, item number two of the council rules or procedures. Staff?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor members of the council. We began last time going, kind of taking a second look, second quick look at the council rules that you had been through and made revisions to on the first look with the idea of just giving one more chance to get through them and then and then we would bring them back in the form of resolution to be formally adopted. At the last meeting, which was September 18th, we got through page four of that second look and then ran out of time. And at that point, the mayor suggested and the council agreed that instead of going through in detail, kind of page by page, we would proceed in this meeting by just asking questions, raising comments to see if there are any kind of last minute changes you want to take before we bring it forward as a formal resolution. And I have a couple of things I want to highlight. And I know that Councillor Pranamrav has some changes that she has emailed me about. And there may be others. My suggestion would be that we start with Councillor Pranamrav's proposed changes and then see if anybody else has any, and then I can bring up the issues that I want to highlight. There's only a few. So I think we ought to be able to get through this tonight.
All right, well, let's go ahead and invite Councillor Pranamrav to talk about her proposed changes. Great, thank you. The first one's on page five, at the bottom of page five. This is five in the markup version under public comment guidelines. We have written communications generally and the last couple of sentences, if you move over to page six, say, "All such written communications shall become part of public record." Yes. If you're prior to 2:00 PM on the day, they are put on the city's website. So what I want to avoid is, you know, kind of prioritizing spoken written testimony or spoken testimony and all of that. I saw a really nice write-up in the Medford rules, which, actually, they call for. I could just read it. If it's, if it's comments that are on an agenda item, they are included in the, much like spoken testimonies included in the minutes with just one line summarizing essentially so-and-so spoke about such and such. And of course, if somebody is interested in that public record, they can make a comment. Comments that are not on a So I think that's going to level things out in terms of testimony in our, in our meetings. And so I would suggest, and I can actually just read, there's only like two sentences. But for the record, can you tell me what you're reading from? I am reading from the Medford. This is under a section with a heading that says, "Written comment." And I did tell this to Dave, and I can also share the, you can Google it if you're interested. Medford, Oregon, City Council rule. So for written comment, subsection A says, "Unsolicited communications to the mayor and/or council concerning matters on the agenda other than public hearings or any other city business issue shall be provided to the council and be individually atomized in minutes if received by noon," which gives a quarter, two more hours the day of the meeting. Item B, "Unsolicited communications to the mayor and/or council concerning matters that are not clearly identified for inclusion under agenda item intended for public comment shall be forwarded to the mayor and/or council, but shall not be included in minutes." And then C, "Anonymous and unsigned communications shall not be introduced in council meetings." And then there's a D about the city manager having the discretion to bring things up, which I don't know. I think that's obvious, but yeah, so I think these are, and I did check with a city council member, and these appear to be working well, and it also avoids letting people kind of take control of our communications to grandstand. Great. Any questions or comments about that from other members? Councillor Para Miller?
I think that one of the questions I have around that is around the public having access to the council's emails. My understanding is that in Medford, the public can't just email council, so anything that comes through to council gets that like extra level of like staff sorting. And I worry that this would, well, what am I trying to say? Anyone can email council, so.
And that is stated in our council rules above. In the paragraph above, and I don't propose any changes to that, so that's like, anybody can email council?
Yeah, anybody can email council. So I guess my question is just, I don't know, I worry, like, I know that, I just worry about having staff summarizing things that could have just been sent to council, like, in an email.
Well, I'm not suggesting that can staff intercept any emails. This is just for public record on our website. Here's a report of the meeting, and here's what happened. And just like we do with spoken testimony, so-and-so spoke on item, agenda item three. It would be so-and-so wrote, offered written testimony on agenda item three. It doesn't have to be any thoughtful notes on the thing.
And is that how it would also be presented to council, or would it just be forwarded to council? Because I guess, is this all related to things that come to this public testimony email?
Yeah, well, actually, the way it says is, is "These communications shall be provided to council." So I don't see any change, and I'm reading from the Medford rules. So I'm not hearing any change on that. So either forwarded to council from the public testimony or city manager, whatever staff receives it forwarded to council so that we're aware or sent directly to council as people do. So that wouldn't change. That'd be just as before. But what appears on our website in terms of reported, what happened at the meeting, here are the minutes. Instead of this, you know, readings of whatever people want to talk about, it would be a summary. And the emails would be available as they would anyway. They're a public records.
So if I can just amplify that, so a person would be able to see what the actual email to the council members was by making a records request. If indeed they didn't get it in before noon on the day of the meeting.
And then the minutes would just have a reference to that.
Right. Just, just as they would if, if people were commenting in person.
And would this just be to the public testimony email? Anything that comes through that?
No, no, I mean it generally. And again, the suggestion is, that I'm trying to change here is what appears in, on our website in terms of what happened at the meeting. So in the minute. Versus the entire letter is becoming part of a package. Anybody else? Do you just want to keep going, Dave? And then we can come back to that. It would be an adoption or direction as amended kind of a thing?
Oh.
Proceedually, how do you want to handle that suggestion?
Well, if there is census, consensus or close to consensus, I would say I'll incorporate that in. You don't need to make a motion. And then you'll have an opportunity to look at it again when it comes back in the form of resolution.
So I'll take that consensus now. Okay. Does anybody object to these suggested changes? All right, so with that, you have a consensus to add that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then Councillor Pranamrav has another.
Right, my second thing is, it's very minor. I just don't want to, I'm trying to stay in line with what the charter says about the role of the mayor when presiding and the council president when the mayor is not there. So I was just going to suggest that on page seven, under Presiding Officer, number four. I really like this, this whole paragraph, but I think rather than saying, "In order to take part in debate or to make a motion or to allow the council, blah, 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 blah," the mayor, you know, hands over when the mayor kind of steps down and says, "Can somebody else preside in this meeting because I need to step out or I want to do public testimony?" I think to say, "In order to take part in debate" is a little misleading, because the mayor or presiding officer can participate in debate. And to make a motion, I think, isn't okay. I think that, to me, that kind of conflicts with what it says about the presiding officer is not allowed to vote, so it seems like why would you be allowed to make a motion? So, so this would just be a changing of those first two conditions to our regular practice, which would be like, my suggestion was, in order to provide public testimony, which has happened, where you've stepped down to testify on something as a member of the public or to, and leave the rest of it the same, allow council, allow a council meeting to proceed despite their temporary absence. And it's not a big deal. I just felt it was a little misleading. Like, the idea that you can't, a presiding officer can't express an opinion when they're presiding, which is a Roberts Rules thing, but I don't think it's a council. I see, I see your point. Anybody have any questions or comments on that? So if there's no, if there's no comments, does anybody object to those changes? All right, Dave?
Okay.
Do you have a consensus on that as well? Thank you, Councillor Pranamrav, for your detailed comments. Thank you. All right, Dave, four is yours.
Well, I want to ask first if there are other councillors who have some suggestions to make before I go through the few that I have. If.
None.
If not, I would ask you to take a quick look at page eight. Item C4, which concerns that public forum provision that we did, remember, we did change and, and put together public comments on agenda items and public comments on non-agenda items, all in the public forum. So they can kind of concentrate that and give the public an opportunity fairly early in the meeting to make whatever comments they have. The towards the let me just find a towards the end. It's the sixth, fifth line up. "When a matter raised in a public forum section of a particular meeting's agenda is not already scheduled to be addressed later in that same meeting, the matter can be added to the agenda of a future meeting by agreement of the council or can be taken up in the other business section of the current meeting pursuant to successful motion to suspend the rules for that purpose." And the suspend the rules part is what I want to focus on. If you'll just hold that in your mind for a minute. And then look at page page seven regarding calls for order of the day. And I've spoken to you in the past about calls for order of the day and the value of that particular interjection that a council member can make in case the council is getting off into a different area that's not on the agenda already. A person can call for the order, a council member can call for the order of the day, and then you have to go back and follow the the agenda that's been set. Bearing in mind that it can be changed at the beginning of the meeting, either by the mayor moving the agenda around or the city manager moving the agenda around. But once that agenda is set, then you follow that. And so you and the public kind of know what's coming next. The workaround for that is to have a motion to suspend the rules. So we got two instances there where there's a reference to a motion to suspend the rules. So now, if you will look at page 10, and the description of the motion to suspend the rules, which is at the bottom of page 10. It's item nine on that page and extends over in the page 11. What we, what was proposed and what you agreed on was changing the motion to suspend the rules to require a two-thirds vote. We, the current rules call for just a majority vote. And I think I argued for changing it to two-thirds to make it harder to change the rules. In effect, you kind of want the rules to be something you follow unless there's a really good reason not to. But we kind of have a practice of being fairly liberal about changing the rules. And so I wanted to just highlight that to you, because a change from a motion to suspend the rules being effective from majority to two-thirds can be significant. For instance, if somebody moves to change the rules and there's a three to three tie on the vote on that motion, even the mayor who can then vote would still not make it two-thirds. Similarly, if you had one person missing and the vote were three to two to change the rules, that wouldn't be two-thirds. So I just wanted to highlight that for you. It, it turns out, seems kind of minor, but it actually is a significant change in that it makes it somewhat harder to change the rules. And you may want that, or you may not want that.
And by change the rules, you mean suspend the rules?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just suspend the rules for that limited purpose.
Councillor Byers?
Well, my follow-up to that is, are you using that term interchangeably with relax the rules, which is another item that we sometimes vote on to do, or is that a separate practice?
There is no provision for relaxing the rules. I think we have taken that to mean suspend the rules, so.
Thank you, thank you. It's, it's just the language I inherited from my previous mayor.
Yeah, you're doing it wrong, darling.
Was I?
You're doing it wrong.
Yeah, I'll just say, you're right. We do it often. I think it's usually so we can, especially when somebody's come here and they're speaking to us and we want to respond, to give them information. And I think memories or suspension of the rules is almost always consensus. I think the only times it has been controversial, when it gets very late in the evening and half the people want to go home. And I wonder, so would, is that when we, when we make a motion to extend the time? Does that also have suspension on the rules? Would that also require two-thirds?
Well, you have, you, you have the ability in the rules to extend for half an hour. But if you wanted to go beyond that, that would require a suspension of the rules.
Okay, so that's to 9:30, and then going past 10, and I think we, actually, that's kind of not controversial. Going past 10, we start to feel like we're no longer certain of the public, and people are too tired. I'm just saying, I'm not uncomfortable with that change. I think, I don't think it would it would be a departure, feel like a departure.
Yeah, it does feel like almost all the time, it's, it's a consensus, full consensus. But I just wanted to highlight that for you, because it could come up. The, another issue. Yeah.
We've gotten to when a matter Uh, we didn't get to, uh, when a matter is raised in the public section. Um, there are the closing words of council, uh, plus a future meeting by agreement of the council, or can we take that in other business section of the current meeting's agenda for some successful motion? Uh, why do we need a successful motion to take it up in other business? Is that deliberately other business or other business?
That, that's a kind of good, uh, point to make. Uh, the only, um, I think the, the counterpoint would be the, the, the public may want to know what your agenda is going to be. And suddenly adding something just because another member of the public made a comment, um, adding it to that meeting. Uh, they might not be watching and not have a chance to, to, to know that that, uh, topic was going to come up in this meeting, whereas if you said unless there's real urgency and we suspend the rules, you gotta, uh, save it until the next meeting.
Oh, I see, yeah, because that's generally the purpose of other business. Open the topic up and ask the council if they want to add it to the future agenda.
Right.
Um, so, uh, this would be different where we'd actually be adding another agenda item. So expecting on what we've referred to on the business with the expectation that we'd be making a decision sometime. Uh, what is their definition of other business, uh, is what they're?
Uh, I, there, on, on page nine, item thirteen. It's kind of vague, but, uh, you know, it says other businesses for items from the mayor or council and items for future agendas.
Yeah, that doesn't sound like a decision.
No, I, I think it doesn't.
Um, so, so, so if it's clear that other business is supposed to refer to, uh, it's opening up, opening up the statement and referring to another agenda, would it be necessary then to? Consider what's a successful motion, who's the, who takes so many superior in any other business? After that? Am I making sense? So what I was saying is that we, we very often will take up a matter on other business, but we never make a decision on it. We decide whether or not whatever thought the public brought up is how we want to spend some time on future agenda. And then we prefer it, um, to another agenda.
I, I think what you're saying is logical and makes sense, uh, and leaving it as is, though, at least uh, arguably keeps it clear for for a person who's testifying. It, because I, I think often people come and, and testify on a particular topic, uh, in, in public forum. And they are thinking, well, then the council will bring it up at this meeting. And the additional language that you're toying with, uh, deleting, uh, does make it clear that it has to go to the next meeting. It's, it's implicit, as you say, in, in the definition of other business.
I don't think it does that, I think what you're saying, I was, frankly, my mother, to me, what this time was showed is that was that we have an opportunity by relaxing, by postponing the rules, to actually take up the agenda, I'm standing, we may make a decision on it.
Yes, and, and don't, and don't you want the ability to do that with a particularly urgent matter?
I think so. Uh, complex Nama?
Yeah, I think that's, that's true out there as far as what I was hearing, the deliberation, I don't think that we ever have, maybe, um, better decisions except for maybe kind of a decision, our people exist in the future agenda, uh, with that, and uh, decision making, that not like, okay, we were gonna ask for more, or something like that. Do we want to have that in other, you know, it's kind of one of those public meetings, kind of controversial items that the public doesn't know about it, it could be less important to the agenda, is it right for the council to make a decision on it? And I think what I remember reading in, in the, in the manual of public meetings is that, that we do have a right to do that.
Yeah, I'm clear about that, I, I, I just want to make sure that, um, that we're not setting an expectation as well, I mean, I, I can see ourselves still being, getting other business and saying, okay, Mr. Jones brought up no dogs in the park without a leash, do you want to take that out? And I don't, that doesn't preclude us from doing that.
Right.
Uh, and we're not obligated to do anything on that, uh, because it will end up on future agenda that's obviously noted. So all of that still there again, we still operate on both, between both of us.
Right.
Okay, um, yeah, I, I, I get your point, I get the point about creating an opportunity for us to add another agenda item on it, too. And I do appreciate that there's a high threshold, because I don't, I don't think, I, I would want to even want to add something on the agenda in the new order. Can't do the task agenda item on it, too.
Yeah, and I, I, I think that's part of the, part of the value of having it be a two-thirds vote to suspend the rules.
Council buyer?
But I, I guess it, I guess this has fallen under item number two, but there have been a couple instances, usually um, decisions to instruct staff to craft a letter of support for a grant for a nonprofit that has a tight deadline coming up, where we have added that to other business and addressed that.
Yeah, as, as part of item number two.
Yes, but I think because it was under item two, it was then added to um, other business.
Yeah, item number two, it can still be there, right, addition, corrections to the agenda.
Right.
I think, the, to your point, I think the example I would see would be a person came before instead of, we choose.
Got it, but I, I mean, wasn't that the non, like, in the case of the nonprofit asking for the, the, or, or a letter of support? Like, they are coming to ask for a letter of support and saying they have a tight deadline.
Very good. Okay, thank you for putting that up on my thinking stuff on, uh, on, uh, on my thinking. Uh, alright.
Okay, um, turning again to page ten. The marked out item, item seven, uh, you all, uh, chose at the, um, July, June eighteenth meeting to eliminate that provision of motion to limit debate or, or a motion for previous question. Uh, and I think the argument at the time was, um, that, uh, there was a charter provision that was contrary to that. And I think somebody else argued that, um, every member should have the right to speak in this kind of is, is a way to preclude that. And I just want to raise that again, uh, the, the motion to limit debate or, or motion for previous question in a lot of parliamentary settings is really important, because people tend to go on and on and on and on, you want to be able to just say, okay, you know, we've heard enough, let's make a decision. Um, so, uh, I just want to raise that for you to think about that, whether that's a provision, provision you really want to delete or not.
I don't firmly need to talk about, uh, it's never been resolved.
I'm curious, um, is there a way that you can just step down on Monday, Thursday, and just talk and start the conference? So, I mean, if you all, you haven't, you haven't heard that too.
Uh, well, I haven't thought about how to articulate that.
That has to be right, the motion, and, uh, and everybody has to agree that there's been a thought. Uh, so if somebody felt right, I mean, if, if we hadn't been there, it would, it would be in the form of a motion and everybody else would have to agree that it's not a decision, and if that wasn't the case, then what is it, would be a lot of time?
So I, so I, I think what, I think the point you're making is, even if you didn't have that this provision in there, you could make a motion. The value of this motion, um, as it, or this, this provision as it's stated is a, a motion for previous question has, um, I can't figure the right word, but it, it moves ahead of other motions. Uh, so, uh, you don't have to wait for your turn, uh, you, it, uh, uh, to be called on, you can just say, I mean, you have to wait to be called on, but, um, you other motions can't get in the way, it, it, it has precedence. Um, and that's the value of it. So that's kind of the, the reason why that's normally included in parliamentary rules. But again, as, as I think you're saying, the mayor, you could just have no reference to it and a person could make a motion. Uh, anyway.
Thanks, um, I, yeah, I don't, I don't know, I really don't like the idea of having rules that limit debate, especially with a, an elected body like this. Um, and I do think that anyone can always, uh, move the previous question and it can't be debated. So it's, like you said, it supersedes whatever's on the floor, it, it's not up for debate. You just have to vote, it could not get a second. But you can't debate whether or not to move the previous question, isn't that right?
Well, if, if you don't have a special provision for moving for previous question, then it becomes just like any other motion, uh, there is debate, uh, there is a second. So.
I thought it was Roberts.
Yeah, I thought our, uh, I, we prefer to Roberts.
Well, that, okay. This is the Roberts rule, yeah.
I think it's a really great thing when you're about to try and continue to hear, um, you're also trying to explain why you're voting, I mean, it's really kind of, we're going to be questioning people on the side. I mean, voting is way easier. And yeah, that, that is a turn, but it's, it's, people could go through it and what they get forward in it, and I, and I just want to apologize, because I, I read it in the part, but maybe it would be a bigger, some rules somewhere else that, um, every member, senior, and candidate, every council, uh, right? With the, I'm looking at it, too, if I can tell.
I. I looked again today, too.
But it's something like, I would like to do something like that, you know, I would like to do something like that, for giving that, uh, I'm interested in that, that the city manager and the representative of the establishment could, could, like, they saw.
There, there is something close to that in item number five on page ten, uh, saying, uh, no, nobody gets to speak twice before everybody has had the opportunity to speak at least once, it's not quite the same, but.
Yeah, that's what I recognize, that's the one, too, as well.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, that's a good way to call it, too. And then providing is that the money officer definitely let somebody argue the same point over and over and over again, you know? That's when it defeats, that's second time, he said.
Yeah, someone's. That's what I was gonna say, that that's also just part of the role of the presiding officer, is making sure no one's you know, just speaking and speaking and speaking to the same point over and over again, so.
I do think one of the values of, just the, uh, so we get the specific, one of the values of this ruling, that it does ask for a two-thirds vote, so it's at the high threshold, we try to come down. And, um, and whereas, it's, it's sort of different from the, as, 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 uh, like, that, I'm, 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 I'm. Uh, complex Nama?
Um, I'd actually be mine, which did, uh, the, the, uh, the question. Um, I feel like, if you, you don't have that much fear, but let's say we're, um, in a situation where there's majority council, that when there's so many differing opinions. Um, uh, the, the rest of the majority of the council or two-thirds of the council could pay council could basically silence that person on every single line of the agenda, I just, between the way calling it, but.
We had a couple of it. We actually had a couple of it. They were in touch, so that, I think, uh, yeah.
Yeah, so I, I'd like to think, well, which, um, that, is that I mean, previous question would stay in here, if that, as it is, if we're three, four, six, seven, or eight, four. Um, I'd be comfortable with that, uh, if there was also permission that said, um, as long as the city manager and every council member has the opportunity to deliberate on.
Are you saying something like, once, everyone has had an opportunity to deliberate on an item?
Yeah. And I would be likely to council there, you know, um, uh, staff, to the manager, for, uh, to the manager, as a plan. So, yeah, so everybody gets heard. As another team would be.
So now I'm watching, and if we want to, if you're trying to, as, before, do you want us to do it?
I feel like it's redundant, if we can already do the, are you trying to protect someone from not having a group of counselors calling the previous question?
So what I'm thinking is, the previous question, we can write this for that many, if we just wanted to, but I think what it means, we're putting kind of a, um, uh, a unit on usage of previous question, yes, we can call previous question when people have been talking all night, but it might not, if we're fair, okay, if everybody had a chance to, there's something that's sitting there, having that chance to talk, they can talk to the uh, the culture, to be. So, so let's say further.
I don't know. It just doesn't feel necessary to me, but I'm not sure why, I mean, I feel like we could say that with every one of these rules, like, should we be like limiting how often we can suspend the rules, like, that feels like getting too into the weeds, the nitty gritty of like, I don't know, it feels micromanaging to me, which worries me. I mean, I hear what you're saying, but at the same time I don't know, I would just hope that a group of elected people wouldn't do that, or that, you know, the presiding officer would step in or something.
Right.
But as far as, yeah, okay, I don't know, it feels like a lot of hovering.
Right, so, uh, let's put that for consensus vote to leave it deleted. Uh, we'll start there, and if I don't get a consensus vote for, uh, consensus on um, modify it. Well, I'm gonna start by with a consensus for putting it back in the way of, like. Does anybody object to that?
I object just because I don't like, I don't agree that we should have, uh, the ability to limit debate.
Anybody else want to weigh in? Uh, oh, Council Nama?
I'll, I'll just say, um, I'm concerned, I like what, um, Council Perry Miller is saying, I, I'm, I'm trying to say that because we have Roberts rules as a, as the fallback. If we don't explicitly say you can't call previous question, people could still call previous question, and I think that's kind of what you're looking for. Uh, Council Perry, or, am I right?
So are you talking about if we leave this deleted?
Deleted or not, because we have Roberts rules in the beginning, people could still have previous question.
Definitely.
Yeah, so if you want them still to be able to call previous question. Well, I, I see no difference in having it in or out, then. In or out of this, a person could call previous question, it's just whether they know about it or not.
The Roberts rule would require a paper from the.
Yes.
Yeah, but in our. The benefit here will, that at least if it's in, um, those who may not be aware of Roberts rule, or that particularly will be able to discover it, being, being the, um. Now, we can talk about it, but uh, so we can't, it sounds to me because we follow, I just want to summarize, because we follow Roberts rule, each hand alone, and we just, uh, right?
No, you, you could, you, you have the ability to, to override Roberts rules, so you could say previous question is not allowed. And that's kind of, I mean, implicitly, that's what you did when you knocked out number seven before. Knocked out number seven before, it didn't though go so far as to say, and. It were were. Overthrowing Robert's rules in this regard, too. Well, let me, let me propose. That when I bring it back in a resolution. I identify some language that is like what Counselor Panama is proposing. As a sort of compromise. And you can look at the language then and decide. I'm I'm hoping we don't have a whole bunch of those. But if we have just a few. Then you can look at it that at that time and decide whether you want that compromise language in there or not.
So that would be the other consensus, because. We're not asking to put it back the way it was. We're not asking to leave it, we have a consensus committee for being modified.
Okay.
And again, this is a new high threshold and everybody has a vote on it, it's going to get shut down, I have no.
Just a thought about all of this, I mean. Especially points that are being brought up by Counselor Panama and Counselor Fain Miller. It really stresses the importance of having a presiding officer who is very aware of their role and how to navigate that. And I will say that it's not always the case that we will have a presiding officer who is that aware of that. I mean, it's an elected position, sometimes it doesn't work out that way, so how do we set up? Any council or presiding officer for success? In the best way possible without relying on a deep or innate knowledge of Robert's rules, which is in it in and of itself. Of a requirement that is almost self-selecting for who can or cannot be successful in that role. I don't know the answer to that question, but that's the thought that keeps coming up for me as the discussion is happening.
Also, something I started wondering is, I mean, talking about in the case where. A a counter is called on, they talk. They talk, they have to call on that counter, they call on again, say the same thing over, or you're talking, it's like more like a filibuster where. Council gets called on and maybe you keep talking.
Either, I might be called on your underneath voting, and again. It has to be literally, the first thing talking, you say, I'm fine with it. And everybody can consider it and the vote is magic. So I, I can't, I think it would be either of those things, but I mean, people can decide, no, you're calling on, you can't get over, and that's another thing, besides.
They could, yes. If they're already talking, though, that's a little harder.
Perceived to call on somebody a second time until I heard from somebody who had listened. And then you took the backside for a point. I've done that, I I've had much more unruly discussions to manage in previous years. And. So it does, there is no standard, or if I don't have a clearly any call for.
I don't, not on council members, yeah.
So I I hate to go out and send a modified language and agree with that, would that still match my idea?
In in response to your your comment, Counselor Byers. You each have the the ability to use a point of order, and I've tried to emphasize that in the past, so. If you have a presiding officer who's not on top of a particular. Motion. The members of the council can make a point of order. So that's some protection from the concern that you were describing.
I appreciate the thought that you were making about it all coming in a big launch curve, and when somebody's needed providing office provision. And and trying to. To create an opportunity that it's a great better than. On the floor of a council. Counselor Nama, last thing to the ladies here, as as was the meeting on the evening where the the by council was in there. And staff was being to the manager, but he was trying to most control in the meeting. All right, well, I'm glad you have a direction.
Okay. Just the last point. There is a, you know, a new statute, and we've talked about this, that. Says every member of a governing body of a public body. With total expenditures for a fiscal year of a million dollars or more shall attend and you training prepared under this section. At least once during the member's term of office. That's a statute. It probably doesn't need to be in council rules because it's in statute, but it may be something. You want to put into council rules, we haven't talked about this before, but I want, just as a kind of reminder. Particularly to the new council members. So you may, I I just want to raise that, whether you want to add that someplace in these council rules. When I bring it back to you.
That council or. Updated the new repeaters, updated ethics, you know, I mean, sort of building in language that. That didn't cite one thing in in particular, but said that there should be a medium. Set aside annually that was dedicated, that or has dedicated on for an updated sometime. And my, you know, I've done other ones, but my point being that we elect office, they go to there, or one of the. And something like that, you do, right, here's the new. Read rules, or here's the new ethic rules, or, you know, putting the kind of example, or they're not going to be intended. So maybe with something like that, that would replace that. And that would serve a lot of purpose, it serves the same purpose.
We could certainly do that.
Project to that.
Okay, that was all I had, if there's nothing else, I will. Soon as we can fit it into the agenda, bring back a resolution that wraps this up.
Everybody got their their ideas in and.
I'm sure you will.